McCormick?
Here.
District four, Weber.
Here.
District five, Haggert.
Here.
District six, Vanslo.
Here.
If there's anyone present in the audience that would like to speak to the council, now is your time on any item that is not on the agenda. So if there's anyone here that would like to speak to the council, now is your turn. Seeing no one, we'll move on to possible consent agenda items. Madam Clerk.
To approve the regular meeting minutes of August 4th, 2014. To approve claims for payment in the amount of $609,412 and 14 cents. A detailed description is available in the Clerk's office on request and is posted on the city's website. To approve five regular operators licenses for the period August 19th, 2014 to June 30th, 2016, and two temporary operators licenses contingent on payment of any outstanding debt owed to the city. Additional operator license application information is available in the Clerk's office on request. To approve painting crosswalks at the intersection of Buckeye Street and First Street upon completion of the construction project. Can we pull that, please? To approve the Bark for Life event on Saturday, October 11th, 2014 at 11:00 a.m., beginning and ending at Angel's Pet World. To approve the Hudson Hot Air Fair, February 6th through 8th, 2015. To place on file the finance officer's monthly financial report, the quarterly report of the public water utility, the engineering search committee meeting minutes from August 5th, 2014, and the August 12th, 2014 primary election summary report. And that is all. Move to approve.
Sergeant.
Brokaw.
Yakub Rad? Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Haggert?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Vanslo?
Yes.
Morset?
Yes.
Item 4D, add painted crosswalks on Buckeye Street and First Street.
I just asked for it to be pulled. I called Tom earlier today and I wasn't able to get in touch with him again for an answer. I just want to make sure we're not painting twice if we have to do anything with that part of the street for the parking spots. If we're going to have to paint it, lose that, paint it again, I just wanted to make sure that we're on.
I don't think we're going down that far, are we?
Well, that's what he was going to look at the map because there was no map on here, so I couldn't.
So the sidewalks that are proposed are going to be right at the intersection of First and Buckeye Street?
Okay.
The proposed parking lot project will still be north of the existing Blacktop Trail, which is north of the boat launch.
Okay, so we're fine then?
That's the scope of that project, so, you know, really anything we do would be north of First and Buckeye.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure before we did something twice. A move for approval.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Let's go to finance. Discussion and possible action proposed second police officer, liaison officer. Chief Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back after the last council meeting, the mayor, Mr. Morset, and I met with Tim Erickson from the school district in regards to working out a financial agreement in regards to the second school resource officer. We have come up with a tentative agreement, and basically the second school resource officer would start if approved January 1st at 75-25, 75 percent paid by the school district, 25 percent paid by the city of Hudson. The current school resource officer would continue the remaining of this year at 67-33, and then January 1, they would convert also over to 75-25, so both contracts would be the same. If the school district wished to start the program sooner, the agreement was is the school district would pick up the total cost of that position, the city would not pick up any of it, nor would we have to pay any of it back in the following year. And I did forget to mention, did we agree to three years on the second one? I can't remember.
We talked about a longer term agreement.
Yeah, a longer term agreement, so that we just didn't have it for one year and then have it disappear. So it's a tentative agreement, they still have to bring it before the school board and get approval from them, but we wanted to bring it forward here. We will have to find the 27.6 for that new position if it's approved tonight, because I don't have 27.6 in my budget.
A move for approval based on finance recommendation, which was pending the passing vote at the school district and pending Marty being able to find what he needs in his budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, thank you, Chief. Next item on the agenda is discussion, possible action on budget transfer.
As I've noted in the issue sheet, due to the extensive amount of snow plowing, salting, et cetera, that we've already had this year, the fuel budget at the end of July will be at budget, what we had budgeted for the whole year. So my proposal is that we would move $35,000 out of the contingency into that fuel account, and that'll get us through there. Neil and I are fairly confident that'll get us through the end of the year, barring some unforeseen spike in fuel prices.
Move for approval.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion, possible action on part-time contract fire inspector position. Chief St. Martin.
Good evening. I went through a quite extensive one earlier. Explanation is metric, got me to go through the whole. I think everybody was.
Everyone was here, unless anybody wants to hear it again.
I'm guessing.
Could you give us a consolidate or a summary?
Basically, we're on a paper inspection system right now, and we want to implement transferring that over to computer-based. We have the software already, we need to implement it and also kind of maybe go through some inspections and that. So the fact that we had the full-time inspector prior to this, and we had a part-time chief, and now we're just to have the one full-time chief, we're short on staff, and I want to kind of get this up and running and try and catch up on some inspections. And I actually, just about two hours ago, found some of my own money in the budget to transfer over. So it's basically transferring the money, hiring a contract person for the rest of the year to input it, and then when they're done inputting the information to help maybe try and get caught up in some inspections and that. And then next year, of course, in the next budget cycle here coming up, I will probably propose that position to be retained or proposed for that position.
Okay. Questions?
You had also talked about a potential ordinance change. Did I hear that correctly?
Yeah, that's correct. That's, I think I might have a copy of it there. I dropped it off right here.
It's to go to one inspector.
That would be in kind of severance. Here you go. To go, right now, roughly two-thirds of our inspections are required twice a year. River Falls is one city that passed an ordinance to do it once a year. I think that's, you know, it's an option to look into. It makes it more attainable for us to be in compliance to do that, but again, that's up to the council, whatever they decide if they are in favor or not. It's just one thing I found in looking at similar-sized cities that, in their programs. The one note on the recommendation, though, there's a typo, it's 24 hours, it says 28 hours on the sheet, so let's know what they have. It would be 24 and not 28.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve.
Second. Okay. Any discussion or questions for the chief?
Well, we want to make, does your motion include giving this ordinance to switch to ordinance?
Yeah, 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 sorry. I'll move to approve and have Catherine look at redrafting an ordinance and bringing it back to the next council meeting.
For the one calendar year.
One inspection.
Yeah. This would probably be a pretty good one to use, there wouldn't be a lot of time.
No problem with that.
Okay. Is that okay with the second, Randy?
Yes.
Or Jim, I'm sorry. Okay, any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief. Discussion, possible action, request to allocate capital stormwater funds for overrides on 2013 sidewalk program. Think the recommendation from Tom and from finance was to take, Tom, why don't you come up, take the change?
Where's ours?
It's my, the lady.
The sidewalk curb and gutter replacement program ran into a few unseen instances, circumstances, where we had some overruns on the program. One was a catch basin repair, when we took out some curb and gutter, the catch basin caved in. The other one was some storm-related things from the 2013 storm. Walnut Street was the biggest overrun, was actually 385 feet of curb and gutter replacement. Actually, was probably accounted for over $30,000 of the project. So, and we were, I guess, about $17,000 over the original quote. At the finance committee meeting, the finance committee recommended that we take $3,200 out of the stormwater to fix the catch basin repair, and $13,776 from the 2014 sidewalk program for the overruns.
Their motion to approve?
My only question was that, in using the sidewalk fund, does that prohibit us from using, I know there was conversation about emergency versus contingency, and will that prohibit that if we need, no?
If at the end of the year, there's additional sidewalk that works, needs to be done that you approve, the money then could be transferred from contingency or unused capital from other, you know, if some of the other bids come in for some other capital things, come in less than expected, you could take it from there as well.
I'll move to approve based on the finance committee's recommendation.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Tom.
Item 5E, discussion, possible action of establishing payment period for interest rate for payment in lieu of off-street parking fees for the Smiling Moose, 601 Second Street. Mr. Darnold.
Evening.
Evening.
When Smiling Moose deck and patio project was approved, there was some discussion on the payment in lieu of parking. Plan commission recommended that the payment in lieu of parking fee would be allowed for $70,000 during that discussion. There was some discussion on the payment period, eight years, anything, any payment in lieu of parking over $7,500 can be paid over an eight-year period. However, the motion did not include that specific, so we're trying to clean this issue up before the building permit is issued. Again, if it's amortized over an eight-year period, that'd be payments of about $8,750 plus interest per year, so that money'd be coming in, how paid for additional parking and so forth in the downtown area. I guess the question was, is what interest rate would we charge for that type of assessment if council chooses to do so?
Neil, you want to give us a market rate that we, would it be what we borrow?
Yeah, I mean, you know, if you look at the ordinance, it says that council shall have the authority to apply interest and administrative charges to the amount of the assessment at a rate consistent with interest rates and the administrative fee that would be customary for special assessments at that time. Our special assessment policy calls for 2% over our latest borrowing rate. When we borrowed last fall, both the notes that had the nine and 10-year term, so the nine-year term would coincide this year with the eight-year term, that was borrowed at 2.75 percent, so our customary rate would be 4.75 percent. In terms of administrative fees, I believe it's for anything under $250,000, there's a 1.5 percent administrative fee, and that would probably cover the cost of adding it onto the tax rule each year because this would be a special assessment. So those are the matters that are at the discretion of the council.
And then each year, we check the interest rate on the thing?
No, it's a fixed interest rate, yes.
Okay. Great, okay.
So you would like us to add 1.5 on to 4.75?
That's up to you.
That's a fee, though.
That is, well, that is an administrative fee that reimburses, you know, helps reimburse the city for.
Interest rate up?
Pardon?
Or interest rate or a flat fee?
With the flat fee.
It's a flat fee.
It's a flat fee, correct.
It's not added on to the interest.
Oh, yeah, it's a one-time flat fee that would be added to the assessment, and then everything would be payable over eight years at 4.75 percent.
So the interest rate stays the same, it was just the administrative fee?
Correct.
Of 1.25 percent.
Seventy, so.
No, it's 70,000, not 700,000.
Dang it.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve.
On those numbers?
Based on Neil's recommendation, the 4.75 and the 1.5 percent administrative fee.
I'll second that. Okay, over an eight-year term?
Over an eight-year term.
Okay. Discussion.
Second.
Okay, it's already been second. Yep. Yes, they did.
I was sleeping at that point.
Yep. Okay, any other discussion on that?
My only concern is that we're going to be expending, probably expending those monies well before the eight years is up, and so we're in the hole. And our rate for parking space fee is pretty reasonable considering what we're paying to add simple parking.
Okay.
Concerns.
Okay. Anything, any other comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Unfinished business. Discussion and possible action ordinance 9-14, amending liquor license ordinance. City attorney.
Well, at the last meeting, you asked me to look into what other, how the other cities are handling these, that have these businesses, how they're handling them. And I took the information from the applicant's list, basically, and both looked at websites and contacted the clerks in the cities to see how they're licensing them, and it looks like most of them go with the combination Class B intoxicating Class B beer, a full liquor license rather than just the Class B beer or Class C wine. I did note, just for your information, because it came up in the discussion last week, well, how do we, how do we define principal business as the serving of food? And Wachah defines it as food and non-intoxicating beverages constitute 65 percent or more of the grocery receipts. That's just.
They do 65.
They do 65. I'm just offering that for your information. What Hudson has done is just look at the definition under 125, principal business, and kind of make a determination. So that, some of the situations are different. For example, in Eau Claire, it's not a standalone business, it's just an event kind of offered by their performing arts center. In DePere, it's a mobile. They go to the licensed premises and offer it as a kind of event at that bar every so often. So there's just, so it doesn't even, the paint, painting part isn't separately licensed, it's not a separate standalone business, they go to an already licensed business and offer it. But anyway, it looked like most are doing the Class B intoxicating Class B beer. I did get a call back today, and I emailed you a brief memo from the Department of Revenue, and actually, it came up in my discussions with one of the municipalities, that they acknowledged that even offering or issuing a Class B intoxicating and Class B beer was not consistent with the Department of Revenue's interpretation of the statute. Under the statute, because that premises has a Class B beer, it's not just a Class B beer license, but they have a Class B beer license when they have an intoxicating, they're still subject to those limitations on other businesses. And I listed out the exceptions to that. Basically, you can't operate another business on a Class B beer premises unless you fall into one of these exceptions. The municipalities who are doing it use the recreation premises exception. The Department of Revenue, and there's no statutory definition of that. The Department of Revenue's position is that this painting studio-type business is not a recreation business or premises, they don't. That's their position, however, they acknowledge there is no statutory definition. And some municipalities have decided they believe it is a recreation premises and have issued the combination license on that basis.
I think we have two issues here. First issue is whether or not we want to amend our existing for the liquor license.
For the, just the Class B beer?
Just for the Class B beer, which, that is something that we can decide whether we want to do that. If we don't want to do that, then we have to talk about the next, it would be the next issue would be operating, I'll call it a full liquor license. So, what's your pleasure? Let's take one at a time.
I'll make a motion not to amend our current Class B beer license.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second.
Discussion on that. Really, that went quick.
Why, I guess would be my question.
Because we, there's obviously plenty of, plenty of information given to us now that to amend it would not make sense. I mean, it would open it up to too many businesses.
Well, we could amend it just to include Wisconsin statute 125.32, which has known exceptions, hotel, restaurant, and then we could define it as a recreation premises if we so choose. Right, is that correct?
Well, no, I mean, the issue is, under the city's current ordinance, as other cities do have separate Class B beer, to get a separate Class B beer license without the intoxicating liquor, the business has to be a restaurant whose principal business is the serving of food. So, that's the problem. Then you open it up to a wide variety of undefined-type businesses, and I think that's what was discussed at the last meeting.
Okay.
I'm only going to make this comment because I find it interesting. I lived in Germany for a few years. Germany defines beer as a food, and it's available everywhere. Everywhere and everywhere you could get beer, because it's defined as a food.
Well, it's not defined as a food.
It's a totally different environment than you can buy beer anywhere.
Okay, any other comments?
And it's warm.
Is there an opportunity to change or add the 125.32? Are we saying we're not even going to consider that? Is that, or we're just not going to amend this?
We're not going to amend our Class B.
Yeah, the separate Class.
And we can move into the.
That would be a separate issue.
Yes.
Just want to make that clear.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other comments or thoughts about the Class B that we have in front of us? Okay, all in favor of not amending?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So we're done with that issue. Okay.
Yes, we don't have an application, any other application. Well, I guess you need to make a decision then on the current application, which is for a separate Class B.
And since you want to change the order.
Okay, I make a motion to deny the current Class B application.
That's 6B.
Class B beer and Class C wine.
And Class C wine application.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
So can they reapply for what or nothing, or?
Okay, so I'm, have the understanding that they have reapplied for a different license.
Oh, I guess I don't have that.
Have they or have they not?
No, I haven't.
I know inquiries have been made.
Okay, we're just finishing the paperwork, we should have it, we'll have it in tomorrow for a Class B full liquor license, yes.
All right. Fair enough. Thank you. These are things I didn't know. All right, we have a motion to deny the license for the Class Beer B, B beer and C, Class C wine license.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion and possible action on recommendation related to the retention of engineering firms.
Oh, I'm right here.
Okay.
I thought we were talking about the next license.
But once you get that in, then they.
Then we have to wait.
That's not on the agenda.
Yeah, that's what I was confused, that when you put it two parts, I was like, okay. Yes, well, we had met with four, we chose to meet with four of the engineering firms out of five that applied, and after the first round of interviews, we were pretty much stuck on two of the engineering firms, which was SEH and Bolton &amp; Mink. So we decided we wanted to hear from a few more, hear from them one more time and bring in more of their, more of their staff that service different parts of our cities, such as like transportation and such. So we did that, we had a second round of interviews. After the second round of interviews, again, it was pretty unanimous that both, both agencies can bring to us different, different specialties, and that we were talking about how other cities use a pool of one, more than one, more than one firm. So we decided as unanimously to hire both firms based on council's approval, and that it would go through the process of either, we wouldn't have to bid out for projects with them for that, it would go out as, if our department heads feel that SEH is more specialized to handle something like GPS or something like that, they would, then they would ask them to handle it, or if it's something we needed to have something done within 30 days, whichever firm could handle it, would handle it, or if both could, they would bring back a price to us, and we could go with either firm depending on the budget.
You meant Bolton, didn't you? Or did you say?
Bolton &amp; Mink, I said, and SEH, yeah.
I thought she said Bolton, sorry.
Both firms could, both firms could consider, but both firms could consider the possibility of handing us a bid as to what it would take them to complete the project, and us, and we as a council could determine from there which firm would handle that project. It also gives us the stability of not losing a firm again and having to start re-interviewing. We, you know, if one decides that they're no longer going to be working with the municipalities, which they both have done for like 25-plus years, so we're not expecting that to happen, we will have a firm in place that understands our city well and the needs of our city.
Go ahead, I'll let you finish.
As far as everything beyond that, Devin took the lead.
Well, and what they recommended was that Danny and I worked together with Catherine and getting some information from Tom Sifko from other municipalities that do this, that we put together agreements, you know, with each of them, and then the question comes up that I have on there is whether you want to authorize staff to do that, or you want, if you guys want to see the agreements, assuming that you agree with all the rest of it, whether you'd want it to come back for approval or just allow staff to develop the agreements. And that's completely up to you.
What's the term of years?
Be indefinite, correct?
Well, then I think I'd like to see it.
And that's fine.
Yep.
I just want to make that clear so that nobody was making assumptions one way or the other, so.
I think one of the things that we can do on this is that after a year or two, we could say, boy, we really like A or B, it's really doing a fine job for us, and we need to go to just one.
Right, and there's no guarantee.
There would be a termination provision in there.
And there's no guarantee, any, either, the plan is not to have any guarantee to either of them that they will get 50, 50, 40, 60, it's just going to depend on.
So what are the strengths and weaknesses?
Well, for example, I don't want to say which firm.
Well, why don't we just put it this way, what are the strengths that each have that complement the other?
Okay, SEH, for example, has, their storm water, their strengths on storm water and was quite impressive, via using grant programs, helping us gain money through grants, was way more impressive to us than Bolton &amp; Mink. The GPSing and all that, they've already started doing that with our water department, so we can just start to lap those in. The transportation from Bolton &amp; Mink is, he is, he, was it transportation or?
Street, more street improvement, wasn't it?
Street repair, right? The street improvements and street repair, Bolton &amp; Mink has the premier person on staff where pretty much every municipality will turn to him if they have a question they can't answer. So we have him at our fingertips. They have incredible, SEH is great at transportation, we're working in the interchange at Carmichael, SEH is right on top of that. They also have a good one on staff at Bolton &amp; Mink, but he's part-time, so we like to So, we like the fact that SEH is, is right there and very familiar with transportation. It's so back and forth between the two. I mean, Jim was in the interviews with me, and as long, as well as Denny, Tom, Tom, and, and it was so back and forth between the two, and the questions we asked were a wide variety that it really was, if we could have taken the people from each firm and made them one firm, it'd be the perfect firm. But we can't do that, so we thought utilize the specialties of both when we need them.
Based on their financial rates, from what I read, wasn't Bolton Mink the, the better price for it?
They had, if I remember right, they didn't have, didn't have as many administrative charges, if I remember correctly. Theirs was more built into their fees.
And as far as fees go, I believe they were going to meet with Tom and Denny, or they were going to discuss financials based on what we wanted.
Whether we want to do a.
Who said Bolton Mink?
Both of them agreed to sit down, they would look at their fees.
Whether we want to do a not to exceed, whether we want to do a percentage, whether we want to, depending on the project.
They were going to be hired based on what we want to hire them on, and they both agreed to be flexible with that and look and, and meet with us. So, that was in the, they're in the process of doing that.
So, have you, you've talked to them about both of them being engineering firms for the city?
Yes, that was one of the questions.
I've talked about, yeah.
That was one of the questions in the interview, and they said they've often worked that way in other cities, and they're more than willing to do that. They've, they're also willing and very excited to work with Tom Sifko, as he basically trained most of them in his tenure. So, they're, they're more than willing to, to, to work together on whatever we need.
And after they were notified, they again reiterated that they didn't have a problem working with.
Has the city done this before, had two engineering firms?
Not our city.
Public Utilities Commission, actually, we use, or not we, but.
And the water, right.
Starting to do more, getting more firms involved on a case-by-case basis, so I think it's working out pretty good, because people are, you know, they have to compete a little bit more, and you get to take advantage of what you said.
And there's a number of municipalities in the metro.
That are doing it.
That have, have a pool, whether it's five, six, or whether it's two or three. And then again, depending on the project, or if they want to bid it out, they use that pool then.
I, I don't feel like we're making, we are remaking the wheel at all. What I feel like we're doing is upgrading our wheels for the city, because we are really able to, like, I reiterate what John said, which is something we also thought of, they are going to have, they know that they're both in it, in the game, and if we were going to see the best out of both of them, and if we don't, we can say, sorry, thank you, we tried with you, you know, and keep moving forward with the one that was, without having to, to fill them in on what's being done. They'll be right there, we can just keep moving forward, or they're going to both do great in the specialties, which we predict they will, and we'll have a, you know.
What's the contract mechanism to tell somebody to, we decided we want the other?
The department heads will make a decision as to which firm they feel would be best suited for the job that needs to be done, as they are obviously more specialized in those, and if there's.
But can we bid it?
Some kind of mechanism in there, a 60-day notice, a 90-day notice, if a year down the road, we decide one of them is not.
Right.
We've got to work all those details out yet, so.
Right, right, and they're, they're more than aware of all that.
I think the other bonus here is that if one firm decides to move on and do other things, we still have at least one firm in place to continue, so we're not stuck here again, we can just add another one in the pool, kind of thing.
Yeah, because since I've been on council, we, this is our, we've been, this happened to us twice now, so this is our third firm.
Lot of different reasons.
It doesn't matter what the reasons are, it's happened to us twice. No, it doesn't matter what the reasons are, the point is it's happened to us twice.
But were you asking, Tom, what's the contract mechanism for each decision?
No, no, I mean, what I understood is that, that some points, the city might decide, well, you know what, we're just going to go with one. And if you've signed a contract with each of them, how are you going to get out of it?
Well, we're going to have that in the contract.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we'll bring those back, that's no problem.
Yeah, I think they should come back.
Yeah, all that stuff will come back to be looked at.
Well, that was the question, you want it to?
Yeah, I think we do.
It should be, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Well, it sounds like you've made a good decision.
Yeah, we want to appreciate all the work you guys did, Don.
Yeah, thank you.
They were both excellent firms, actually, either, either one of the two would serve us well, but now we have an even better situation with having two excellent firms who are actually superior in different areas, so.
And, and it was amazing, you go in with, reading what we read, and I had my mindset on a different firm.
Both times.
Both times, and it just, they, this is just how it was done, so.
Okay. So, we need a motion to approve these two firms?
And have us proceed with developing agreements, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve SEH and Bolton and Mink as the city engineer, engineering firms, and have the contract be worked through with Devin and.
Denny.
Denny and Catherine, and be brought back to finance.
Sure.
For approval, and then to the council after.
Sounds good. Is there a second?
Jim.
Jim, second. Discussion, any more thoughts, comments?
Yeah, you know, I just would like to, you know, I'm happy to vote for your motion, but I'd like to make it subject to our review. I, you know, you've seen it all, we haven't.
Oh, right, yeah.
That's what I said, the contract comes back to the council's review.
But you talked about, your motion is to hire these two firms.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm saying, don't we get a chance to review the information you had before we vote on your motion?
Back, that's when we discussed, I thought we discussed that when we were setting up a committee versus, I'm going to hold council do it. But we can get, I get the information, well, you've got the information.
Got it, yeah, I just wanted to.
We did it that way last time, which took a long time.
Yeah, that information only doesn't really touch on all their capabilities, are you, it's, you had to be there and listen to them, talk to them, ask them questions, hear their responses, find more, get more in-depth on some of these specific issues, and you find out where, you know, what they were really capable of, what their history is.
Sure.
What their vision is.
And like I said, I went in, one of the firms was on top for me, and they, you know, they didn't present how you read. I mean, really, how it was presented was quite different.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? I hear what you're saying, Tom. I mean, we, we kind of, when we, when we voted, we delegated our, I thought we delegated the authority to the committee, and they, you know, if you're uncomfortable with it, you vote no. So.
I'll vote yes, because we'll, we get a chance to look at it, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And the contract, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mary, and, and Jim, and Tom and Tom, and Devin.
And Danny.
And Danny, sorry. New business, discussion and possible action on deer management report and new contract. Who brought this one in?
Lon's here.
Lon, oh, I didn't even see you there. Come on up, Lon.
How you doing? Hi, I'm Lon Faya with River Valley Deer Management, and I'm here for, for a request to continue for another year, the program that we have successfully run for the last five years with the city to continue, to keep check on, and to continue to reduce the excess number of deer in the city of Hudson. We had a meeting at the, in the spring at the conclusion of the last deer hunt. The vote at that time by the committee members was to continue, recommend continuing the program into the following year, and per the terms of our contract, which we do at no cost to the city, it requires an annual approval by the city council to continue, and we're here to request that again.
How many deer last year, Lon?
Not, not too many, 12 actually, was the number. We met with the DNR and asked, is that too small of a number? And they said after, after the number of years, four to five years, he said that is exactly where we should be, to keep on it and to keep the reduction. It's sort of like, like trimming the, the grass. If you wait for it to, to grow to a, a large height, then you're going to cut a lot of grass. If you keep managing it as you go, that is the number that they were comfortable with. The DNR was comfortable with that.
Do they give you a number, maximum number?
They don't. As, as far as the metro zone, there's quite a bit of discussion in the deer hunting community these days as to where the, whether there are enough deer or not enough deer, and that does not really apply to an urban setting where there is no check on the growth of the deer. So, we still have an abundance of deer in the city of Hudson, the surrounding community, and with certain golf courses growing even wilder, it looks like they're going to have plenty more to eat.
Okay. Make it a deer park. Questions or comments? We have a deer management committee. I think, Randy, are you on that? Okay, we have five community members, and four, and you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. What's your pleasure?
I'd move to approve the renewal of the deer management.
Second.
Program.
Okay, there's a second by Tom. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Lon.
Thank you. Glad to do it.
Yep. Discussion, possible, action on ordinance 11-14, ordinance amending chapter 202 signs. Mr. Darnold, back again.
Back in 2006 and 2012, the city of Hudson amended our sign ordinance to allow a little more flexibility on signage for large commercial developments, where we may have multiple tenant, multiple building developments. And the purpose of the master sign plan approval, which is approved through a conditional use permit, which means a public hearing's held by the plan commission and the actual approvals made by the common council, is to actually reduce the number of overall signs in these larger commercial areas. Now, they may have multiple lots, where you may have six or seven lots in a commercial development. In that case, you could have seven individual signs, up to 45 feet in height, and 135 square feet in area. The intent of the master sign plan was to reduce the number of overall signs, coordinate it, so you have multiple businesses on signs, reduce the number of signs, and hopefully reduce the clutter of signage in the commercial areas. We have a large commercial development in the Hudson Center, which is a former tourist, visitor center. We just need a little more flexibility and allow the master sign plan, planning commission recommends to increase the number of signs from two currently is the maximum, to one per 600 linear feet. So, what we're doing is looking at the size of a parcel on it, and then adjusting that piece, so, again, if you took the, where one of the master, or master sign plans currently is, is the Banter Development on Southeast Quadrant of Carmichael Road, and stage line, again, two signs would be permitted for that length, similar to what they have now. Also, 300 square feet maximum, that's more than double or current, but also we had signs several years ago, they were in excess of 400 square feet. Also, a maximum of one business per, we have multiple businesses on sign, one business could not take the whole square footage area, but you'd have a maximum of 60 square feet of sign area, and then the overall height is 45 feet.
Which is not a change, is it?
It's up from 35, but I think, I think actually there's, the intent was to go to 45, is, the ordinance is written at 35.
Right, I think, I, okay.
I'll move to suspend the rules. Second.
Roll call.
Vanslo?
Yes.
Javier?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Morset?
Yes.
Yakub Rad?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion on the floor on this particular item, on ordinance 11-14?
Move to approve amending ordinance 11-14.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Oh, you want to?
Pardon? We already have a second. Discussion.
No, I was going to, I thought you were going to.
No, I said discussion.
Okay, I just wanted to mention, I think that, you know, they're putting this, these signs on the, on the freeway side, instead of on the, on the Crestview sign, so I think it'll be a much cleaner, nicer look, and I, I think what they're doing is, is much better than having things on the Crestview side where you start to block being able to see cars coming down the road and such like that, so I think that's great.
Okay.
Let's just clarify a matter, they got to go through a conditional use permit. This is not approving their plan. They still have to go through the conditional use permit process to have their plan approved.
Right.
So, what, at least they discuss of us could change.
I have a question on 5C, says businesses not identified on the multiple business off-premise sign described in sub-section C, what we're changing, may have one free standing sign per lot, 48 square feet, yada, yada, yada. Does that mean that they, if they choose to not be on that main sign, that they can also have a sign?
They can have a small sign at the entrance, at their entrance, which is very limiting, and that, that section's not being recommended for change. That's not up for amendment.
Right, I understand that, I just, I guess I wonder about that particular piece of the wisdom of that, of that section. What was our thought on that, Denny?
Well, I mean, if they go on the main side, they aren't allowed to have that secondary sign. If they're not on it, then they're allowed to have a very small sign at the entrance.
It doesn't stop the proliferation of signs that way. That's, that's my concern, you could say, oh, no, I'm not going to pay to be on that one, I want my own sign, and you can have six signs at the entrances, the way this is written.
Well, I think, you know, my experience is that's not happened, because they want a fuller exposure on their signage.
Right, freeways.
In our developments, we don't allow signage other than on our mountain sign, so that's our policy. For example, we're signing some parcels right now, and we're putting in the restrictions of deer, restricted from having any mountain signage.
That's good. But. But it could happen. It could happen. So, I, I have some concerns about, you know, maybe that's a subject for a later date, but I'm new to the sign thing, so you guys. Well, it's taken many, many years of sign discussions that, it's not perfect by any sense, but I think we've made progress.
Well, the way I read it over here, I get a little one over here, or a big one over here, is that kind of.
Which one are you going to take? You're going to take the bigger one.
How much exposure do you want?
On the freeway side.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Danny. Okay, last item. David here, yes he is. We've got, the last item on the agenda is a construction, possible action on a contemporary, temporary construction easement for the Smiling Moose.
I'll try to keep it quick, last thing, I want to get out of here.
Take as much time as you like.
All right. Hudson Real Estate LLC operates Smiling Moose. As you know, they are planning a expansion to the west. Upon review of that project, you know, I got familiar with the site, it is a challenging site. It's bordered on three sides with, you know, it's bordered on public property on two sides, private property on a third side, and makes little, little room for construction staging and so forth. So, we identified the need for a construction easement. Here to ask that we enter into that easement with Hudson Real Estate LLC.
I move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, I think the only issue I had was the requirements on the insurance. Is that what we did with the Spring Brook dental? Did you find that?
I didn't have a chance to look at that.
That is correct, that.
Yeah, was that the same amount, do you know, David?
Kathy, can you help me?
I don't know.
I, I can, I believe it is.
The $2 million per occurrence?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. 3 million for each occurrence, 2 million per, that seems high, but if that's what they have.
Well, we can check if you, I mean, the intent was to be.
Consistent?
Yeah, we use that.
Can we make?
Spring Creek as the basis for this.
If it's the same, then I guess we're consistent.
So, if you want it consistent, there's no reason for it not to be consistent, is So if you want it consistent, there's no reason for it not to be consistent, is there, David?
So can we just make the motion, can I make the motion state that approval?
With insurance requirement.
With insurance requirement being consistent with the Spring Creek.
Okay.
Construction project.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
All right.
How, how long is this supposed to last, do you know? Do you, do they give you a timeframe or?
Uh, my guess is, uh, probably a 90-day timeframe.
So it'll be starting very soon?
Well, they, they have a few items to, to get in order, um, but I'm, I'm expecting they want to get started as soon as possible.
Will there, will there be a workaround on that sidewalk then, or will people, it's just going to be closed?
It's going to just be closed.
Okay.
My only concern is that item seven, in, in your letter, uh, when alley closure when necessary, you kept clear as much as possible closed during the times, yada. But when you read the agreement, there's really no limitation in the agreement at all around closing the alley that, that I could see. It just says.
There, there is some verbiage. Let me see if I can find it here.
That alley has to be left open, right? I mean, both from the fire and, and, uh, public safety.
Um, Marty and Scott were both brought in on conversations on, on the alley and, and, um, they agreed to, uh, you know, allow it to be closed as needed. Uh, I'd hate to have that alley try to stay open when there's a excavation.
Correct.
Right adjacent to.
It's under term.
Yeah, the alleyway.
It says, "The temporary construction easement on the alleyway shall be in effect when there's an open excavation, which is expected to last approximately one week at the beginning of construction. After that, the alleyway portion of the construction easement shall terminate, and the alley will be kept open for.
So about a week.
Yep.
One week at the, I mean, that's the expected term.
That kind of, that helps a little bit.
Yes, it does.
Any other comments or thoughts? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Anything for future agenda items for the, from the council? City administrator?
Two quick things. Um, the council did receive the election results. They're on there. We had about 10% citywide for the August primary, ranged from 6.5% to 16.4%, depending on the district. What we guessed it would be, but it's still not what you'd expect. And then the general, as most people know, is November 4th. We'll all keep you updated on when the absentee ballots, et cetera, are available, so.
Am I correct that District 3 had the highest turnout?
Well, that is skewed a little bit because of, because of the wind agreement facility.
Sure.
They have.
Happens every year.
But they usually are the highest, yes.
Between 3 or 6 every time.
And then the budget will be going to the department heads on Wednesday or Thursday with their numbers. And then we'll have them back by September 15th, and then finance will start working on them, so.
Last place is one or two.
Uh, city attorney, her this time. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
For adjourned? Thank you very much.